Yeah, I'm Chuck Brown.
Okay. Whoop. My head.
There it is. He's on.
Now we don't. There we go.
Just going on.
Good evening again. Welcome to the United City Council Meeting. A meeting this call to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Hey. Yours is on.
Mr. Clerk?
Chuck Brown?
Here.
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Don Cummings?
Here.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Here.
Dean Kilburg?
Here.
Greg Malodra?
Here.
Richard Marx?
Here.
Mary Sino?
Tom Simonian?
Here.
Ron Singer?
Here.
I know you're a full house tonight. That's wonderful.
We begin our city council's meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I will kindly ask Officer Sullivan to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Officer. And first on our agenda tonight, under Item 3A, is a Police Department Report Presentation. We have a special guest with us this evening. Officer Sullivan, welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys, for inviting me to talk to you a little bit about some of the services that we offer with the Geneva Police Department. I am Detective Sarah Sullivan with the Geneva Police Department.
Detective. Good God, man.
I answered either. Officer, detective.
Why didn't Commander Nash, like, signal me or something?
Answered either.
We're all officers.
Yeah, we're all officers. I've been with the Geneva Police Department for 10 years, about a year now as a detective. Currently assigned to investigations, and I fill the role of Internet Safety Officer. And one of the criteria for that role is I do offer Internet Safety presentations to the community, whether it be our middle schools, high schools, elementary schools, Boy Scout, Girl Scout troops, any community organization, church that comes and asks me, I'm more than happy to present. Some of the topics we present on, I was gonna go over tonight, not gonna go real in-depth because I know I do have a limited time to speak, and you guys have lives to get to. But I do talk about cyberbullying. That is one of our biggest topics of concern, especially for parents and the parents that I present to, covering what cyberbullying includes, why people bully, why kids do not report it. Amazing how many kids have been experiencing and do not report it and some resolutions for cyberbullying. I also go into some stories of some children who unfortunately took their lives. I reserve this for the older kids, parents. Another topic of concern is sexting, and this does go along with cyberbullying because these images can be used to embarrass kids. So I go into, kind of, for the older crowd, I will touch on legal consequences. For the younger crowd, I just, you know, stay away from it. And parents, we do go into the legal consequences as well and what to do if you discover this or if you are a victim of it, to always come forward. I do discuss online predators and the activities of online predators. I cover grooming. I define what grooming is and tell parents what to look for, how to spot grooming, and red flags. For the younger generation, I kinda play it up a little bit with some characters that helps them kinda pay attention, but, yeah, they're the Wizy Wigs. We have the Ogle, the Hot Head, the Follow Fiona, and the Numb Butt here. The kids really get into it. They have a good time with it. Fourth and fifth grade seem to love these characters.
Detective, may I ask you a quick question?
Mm-hmm.
Forgive me for interrupting, but...
No, that's okay.
Forgive me for my lack of intelligence. What is grooming?
Grooming. Absolutely.
And please, newspapers, don't write that I asked that question because I have no...
No, no, no. I asked this at the middle school, and I actually have several kids who, that's when you brush your dog. It is not when you brush your dog, but I love that they volunteer and speak up. It is actually when a predator online, we call it grooming, preparing a kid for the ultimate goal of meeting face-to-face. They will go and they will ask to be your child's friend on, I'll use Facebook or Instagram, for example. And usually, for the first couple of days, they won't talk to your kid. They'll just be researching. They'll go to your kid's Instagram, and they may link their Instagram to their Facebook or to their Kik or whatever, and they will research every social networking account that your child has to figure out what they're interested in. If your child is interested in Harry Potter, Batman, and golf, then they will all of a sudden become Harry Potter, Batman, and golf experts, and then they will start talking to your child. So a red flag is somebody who has the exact same interests as your child. Another thing they will do is they will pay attention to the child's parents, your schedules, which, if you think about it, if it's a child on the other line, what is a child really gonna care? The exact hour, mom and dad are at home, what they're doing, when they're in the room, how often they look at the computer, stuff like that. So that's another red flag. Then they'll gradually start to introduce content to your child that makes them uncomfortable. The process of this is inappropriate pictures, inappropriate stories. Then to get your child to send them inappropriate pictures, inappropriate stories, to the point where your child is comfortable enough to give up personal information and then to meet in person. So that covers the basics of grooming. Some of the risky behaviors to, if your child does fall prey to grooming, some of the risky behaviors is going to be downloading programs without permission, viewing inappropriate material, maybe they're not, you walk into the room and all of a sudden they're switching the screen or hiding their screen real quick or closing programs down, stuff like that. Sharing passwords is a big no-no. So we go over risky behaviors that parents can look out for in their kids. Social networking sites, there are so many out there that parents, my mind gets boggled by them. And parents especially, they don't have time, I don't have time, that the children have to sit on the computer all day and come up with Kik, Instagram, Facebook, Snapchat, and it goes on and on and on. So I touch on the difference between some of the sites. I go over the pros and cons, some sites to avoid, what to look out for in other sites. And then from there, I talk to the parents about safety tips. This could be parental control software, both for the computer and for mobile devices. There are different ones for each. Also, I offer them resources. And some of the resources can actually be found on the Geneva Police Department's website. If you want to go there, go to the main website, go under Crime Prevention. Under Crime Prevention, you will find Internet Safety. Under Internet Safety, there will be brochures, useful websites, and contact information. My direct boss is Sergeant Frieders, but you can contact me, you can contact the commanders, and they'll get you to the right person, and I can set up a community presentation if you like or just answer any general safety questions you might have. Any questions anybody has for me at this time? I know I went over everything really fast, a very broad category there.
Do the majority of the phone calls you receive, Detective, come from students who don't know where else to turn, or does it first begin with a parent?
It usually begins with a parent. And the story usually is, the child goes to the parent, the parent finds something, or the child goes to a friend or a teacher, and that's how it usually comes into me.
And what's the reservation of going to the police?
Um, well...
Is there any?
There is. When I get, the children don't want to tell because they're afraid they're gonna lose their computer privileges. Like, oh, this happened, mom and dad are gonna freak out, and they're gonna take everything away. So the children are afraid they're gonna lose their computer privileges, their equipment. The parents, sometimes when it gets to the parents, the parents see one side of it, and they're like, I want justice for my kid, and I want justice now. And when we start looking into it, a lot of the times, it's, there's two sides to the same story. So somebody may look like they're being cyberbullied, but it was caused by another incident. So there's a lot of back and forth. So sometimes we have parents that are, they're looking for resolution, just, we need you to find who's doing this and make it stop. Sometimes we're looking for parents that want to push the full extent of the law. It really depends on the severity of the situation.
And forgive me for this naive question as well, but the cyberbullying, do you experience that it primarily exists within a district, or is it multi-district?
Uh, it's everywhere.
But I mean, would a, quote, a Geneva kid be bullying another Geneva kid? Or does it seem to be, you've got kids from elsewhere bullying kids and...
Um, it generally, I mean, a lot of the times, you'll see it'll start, it will start within a school, one school. But then, everybody with social networking, everybody's friends with everybody. So by the time we get involved, other schools are involved, other districts are involved. So it gets very widespread very fast. Any other questions? Yes?
Thank you. Your department, does your department have expertise beyond just cyberbullying of teenagers, et cetera? If somebody has a problem with their computer, they're being hacked, their, their being, their computer is being virus, does your department have resources or access to other resources that you could push people to? Some people just don't know where to start if their computer is all of a sudden gone bananas.
Right. Our department does have access, does have the ability to, and the reason I address cyberbullying at teenage level is that's what we see a lot of. But beyond cyberbullying at teenage level, beyond, it could be adult level, it could be younger than that, it could be an actual predator, we have gone after those as well, whether it's child pornography, attempted child luring. We can go, we can handle all of that. So the go-to resource would be us, whether you feel you're being harassed or whether you feel your child has actually been the victim of a legitimate child predator. We are the go-to place for those concerns.
So that can actually happen in cases where a person has a court restriction from being close to somebody else, and they decide to bully them on the Internet. That could happen too?
Yep.
And again, your department could help...
Absolutely.
Point them in the right direction.
Yep. We would actually investigate that case ourselves if that is within our jurisdiction. That would be a case we would investigate ourselves, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you. Thank you, Detective. I enjoyed the presentation. With the behavior of grooming, is there, you know, there's some, I know there's software out there that can look for some things, but are there, there's not software heuristics that could, like, identify grooming-type behavior, is there?
Not grooming-type behavior per se, but key words. A lot of parental software will ask you to input your personal information in there and your child's personal information. So if your child were to go and type in their address, they would be blocked from sending that out. So that's one way to safeguard your child. Certain sites will be blocked with certain parental software. So in the process of grooming, the predator might instruct your child to go to a pornography site. Well, the parental software isn't going to allow that. Not only that, but the parental software, certain parental softwares, if you set them up, wherever you are at, it can send an alert to your phone. Hey, your child just tried to go to this site. Hey, your child just tried to enter their address here. Hey, your child is using this. So it can help monitor and help keep you alerted even though you can't be there 24/7 on any device they own.
Thank you. Do you recommend this parental software personally, or do you give parents a list of it? Or how do you get them to buy into all of this?
I do not personally specifically recommend, and we're not allowed to as a police department, say this one is the number-one best. I have found, though, if you go to Google and you Google "top parental software for 2014" for Mac, smartphone, whatever device you have, you will get a list. And if you go back 2014, 2013, 2012, you will notice some of them are gonna be at the top of the list consecutively. On top of that, there's charts, and I believe those are listed on the website as well, that you can go to, that gives you a graph of what each one does. So if you want to monitor your kid but don't necessarily want them to know you're monitoring your kid, there's stealth software that can do that for you. If you want your kid to be stopped and you want them to know it's there, there's software that can do that for you.
Thank you. Very well. Really, really good presentation.
Thank you.
Alderman Simonian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, sir.
Where is that line, that crossover line, from simple children's, you know...
Teasing.
To, yeah, to bullying? To what defines bullying, in your perspective?
You know, that, that's a really good question. Unfortunately, the Internet, it doesn't have the same emotion, the same interfaces as face-to-face contact does. So some kid could say something and be laughing and giggling, and, oh, I hope they got that as a joke. And on the other end, that child doesn't understand that that's a joke, and they're torn apart by it. So sometimes it's merely just coming together and saying, okay, this was said. It's not particularly horrible, but it's not particularly nice either. What did you really mean by this? And maybe it's just the child who wrote it realizing, hey, what I meant to come across didn't come across that way at all. So we don't like to go on guns blazing when it comes to children and the harassment until we have the background on it. If it's just a matter of simply sitting down and saying, hey, you guys, when you guys are communicating on the Internet, you need to be very careful about how this is perceived because they can't see this smile on your face, they can't see that you're winking, they can't see that you're joking. So make sure you're careful. But we don't just, we take every case as a case-by-case basis, I should say. We don't just, oh, this is, this is definitely cyberbullying, we need to prosecute them. That's not how we view it.
Thank you.
Are you surprised by all this?
I'm glad you guys are asking so many questions. Sometimes I get a lot of blank stares and nobody wants to ask questions, so it's great. As far as the Internet, there's always something there that surprises me. Always something there that surprises, you know? There's so much technology out there that it's just so hard to keep up with, but it's a fun job.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Bruno, yes. Mr. Simonian?
Couple things. When do you start seeing, you know, what age, what grade level do you start seeing this coming to the fore? And it's probably younger than most parents would.
It's younger than most parents. I ask my middle schoolers, how many of them, and I present to both 6th grade and 8th grade, and I ask them, how many of them have heard of the word sexting? By 8th grade, they're all raising their hands. By 6th grade, I get about 50 to 60% raising their hands. So...
And do they know what it means? I mean, it's 6th...
You know, some of them are gonna raise their hands because their friends are raising their hands. But, you know, I will actually ask the question, what do you think it means? Sending inappropriate pictures of yourself. So they generally know what it means. As far as bullying goes, I mean, I've had, I've had parents of 4th and 5th graders come up to me and say, hey, there was a bullying incident. And usually, it's not as full-blown at that age, but it can start at that age. Middle school, I would say, is where it really starts.
And could you point me to the link on the website again that you'd gotten to?
Sure. Which one is it that you're looking for?
You, actually, I had already started looking at this. Some information about cyberbullying. Oh, I see.
There's cyberbullying there.
That's under city government, city departments, police, crime, oh, okay.
Yeah, I can leave that up for you.
Thank you.
Yes.
So I know the school district has a bullying policy. Where did, where did the police get involved in that?
Um, that depends on each school. I know the middle schools are really pretty good about, if they think it originated outside the school, they want to get us involved and calling us and making sure that we know what's going on as well. And we work with them closely. A high school, we have an officer stationed at the high school, so anything that raises any red flags, investigator Jer D. would be made aware of. I don't know what their policy is per se on getting ahold of us. I just know that I get contacted and I speak with them regularly on things that they think are an issue. I've been giving presentations, and they'll come up to me after a presentation and ask me to come and talk to them about a situation they're having and ask for advice on how to handle it.
Thank you.
Mr. Simonian?
Thank you. Could you go back to your first page with the pretty picture of the Ox River?
Yes.
A recommendation. It's such a beautiful picture with, like, ugly titles. Maybe you want to put, like, some background of Batavia and St. Charles with those titles.
I will remember that next time.
It's just a suggestion.
We will now be erasing 12 seconds of the tape.
Any other questions you guys have for me tonight?
It's fascinating. Thank, yes, Commander.
She gave you a very condensed version of all this, understandably. I highly recommend, she does, I would say, Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, 10-plus presentations a year to the school alone, reference PTOs to the school. I encourage you to attend one of her presentations. What you'll learn from it is you want to just get your computer and throw it out the window. It's, what you will learn will see you. So I encourage you to attend one of her presentations.
Would you be so kind as to share the dates of those coming up? Because that would be fascinating. As long as our presence doesn't inhibit the conversation of the presentation. Okay.
No, we, the PTO presentations are a real good one for parents who are looking to just plug in. You don't necessarily maybe have middle school or high school-aged children, but you just want to kind of plug in. The PTO presentations have always turned out real well.
Is that, if it's that powerful a presentation, is that something that you'd suggest putting on the website so people can take a look at it without having to be at these meetings?
And I have been asked about that. The only thing I hesitate for is the material I use in there is from, it's called ICAC, Internet Crimes Against Children. It's the task force I'm a part of. And we have permission to use it while we're presenting. We don't have permission to give it out.
Gotcha.
And a curious question. Do you have counterparts in the neighboring communities as well?
I have worked with the neighboring communities. I've worked, I've worked child pornography cases with St. Charles and Batavia. I've also worked with West Chicago, Elgin, South Elgin, and some farther-away communities as well.
And they have a dedicated detective like yourself?
Some of them have a couple. Some of them have an officer that bounces back and forth between the titles. But ICAC is actually countrywide.
Right.
So there are officers all over the state that are part of it.
Any other questions for the detective? Anyone from the audience? Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me up.
And thank you, Commander, for leading the applause. Item four, ladies and gentlemen, is the amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening by anyone on the city council? Anyone in the audience? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and can be enacted by one motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that we remove Item 11A from the omnibus agenda to accommodate some public comment.
Second.
Seconded by Flanagan. Voice vote sufficient, Mr. City Attorney? Roll call is required?
Well, roll call to the omnibus, and he's already removed.
Oh, forgive me, forgive me. On the omnibus agenda. Anything else? Any questions or comments, that which is remaining? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Greg Malodra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Motion passes. We jump down to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in aggregate for our consideration.
Bills for payment total $724,298.95.
Mayor Burns, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual invoices that add up to that total can be found in the packet for tonight's meeting on the city website.
Second.
Alderman Brown makes the motion to pay the bills as presented. Alderman Flanagan makes that second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Greg Malodra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
We jump down to committee of the whole, items of business. Item 11A has been removed from the omnibus agenda by Alderman Bruno. Alderman Bruno?
I would suggest a motion first, Mr. Mayor.
As I was gonna ask Alderman Bruno for the motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Brown. Alderman Bruno, the floor is yours.
It was requested, there is an individual in the audience who would like to comment on this. I wanted to give them an opportunity to speak.
Absolutely. Siobhan? Director of the Park District, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to miss my own meeting to be at yours.
Yeah, that's a heck of a gig.
Everyone's meeting is more fun than your own meeting. I appreciate you letting me speak tonight. I had just found out last Monday late about the committee's proposal that was on the table to reduce the contribution for land cash for the 7th Street and James Townhomes. And I could not make it last week, and I did need a little time to research and look into some of the details of that before I came out today. I do thank Todd Latham from the school district for speaking on the Park District's behalf last week. I thank all of the aldermen, the city of Geneva, for having the forethought and the vision to pass this very important ordinance, come to find out back in 1967. I thought that Naperville was the first community to pass this important ordinance towards land conservation, but indeed, Geneva was before Naperville. So kudos to us. Since then, Naperville has acquired over 2,500 acres due to this important ordinance that does protect open space in our communities. And here in Geneva, we have over 700 acres of open space. Everyone here, I'm sure, is familiar with Peck Farm, our largest parcel. Those sorts of parks, open space, and land conservation opportunities would not be available to us as Geneva citizens without this important ordinance in place. The land cash ordinance is an ordinance that gives the Park District the opportunity to acquire a lot of that open space, as does some referendum funding, as well as donations, and a lot of grant funding from the state of Illinois and some federal grant funding. So that's been really important to us over the years. When we were talking about this last week, when I listened to the meeting from last week, the school district was talking a lot about, and I heard a lot about, impact fees. And this land cash donation, the cash portion going towards impact fees, and that certainly is a part of what is important. But being a parks and recreation professional for the past 27, 8 years that I have, when we think of land cash, we really don't think about cash as much as we think about land and conserving land and utilizing that cash as an opportunity to maintain open space. Geneva's been very fortunate in that regard. Some of the cities that are closer to the city of Chicago that did not enact this ordinance in time really do, you know, are landlocked and have a lot more blacktop and a lot more houses and a lot more development than they would have liked. Having the opportunity to go back and do it again, I think many of them would have had this in the front of their minds. You notice a difference in Geneva between the new developments where land was devoted to parks and open space as opposed to land in the older part of the community where you see parks like 4th Street Park or 7th Street Park. And you can tell that those are of a much smaller scale. We like our neighborhood parks, but you can tell that those are more of an afterthought as opposed to putting a lot of effort into that upfront. So really, the acquisition of open space is what is so important to the Park District about the land cash ordinance. Right now, I know we're talking about redevelopment, not new development, and that's a new set of circumstances to us and one that we haven't had to address yet. We have addressed it a few times. It was brought up at the last meeting that we have given a credit on another occasion for a situation similar to this, and that is true. The city has done that in the past, but the city has also maintained the full contribution for some redevelopment in the past. And so there is precedent that's set on both sides. I think it's also an important point to consider that the redevelopment that we're talking about here and some of the other redevelopments that we're extremely excited about, I know the city is, the Park District is very excited about us developing again after the long recession. But the redevelopments that we're looking at right now are more buildings and more blacktop and less open space. And less open space means more of an impact on our park system and more of an impact on our path system because people don't recreate in their backyards when they live in townhouses, apartment complexes, apartments above commercial. They have a tendency to utilize open space, public open space, all the more. So you could make an argument that redevelopment of more dense housing requires more of an impact on the Park District. Lastly, the last point that I would like to make is that open space, land acquisition and conservation is of ultimate importance to our constituents. It always has been. In 1996 and in 2000, the Park District passed two referendums for open space. In 1996 and in 2000, the Park District passed two referendums for open space with more than 80 percent of the vote, on average. The Kane County Forest Preserve District has passed four with 2/3rd's vote since 1999, and they even passed their last open space referendum in 2011 during the recession. So, that goes to show that, all the way back to 1996 through today, through the recession, land conservation and paying attention to preserving open space is of vital importance to our residents. Open space in our community has economic benefits of increasing property values. Some say up to 20 percent on a house that's near a park or a parcel of open space. It has health benefits and healthcare savings that are realized through a more active lifestyle. We have calculated those into the millions of dollars for the fitness centers and the bike paths and active opportunities that we have here in Geneva and healthcare savings. And it has environmental benefits of improved air and water quality per acre of open space. My purpose visiting today was to ask the City to continue to value, protect, and support our land cash ordinance and to weigh those benefits that I've brought up tonight when we are considering reducing the contribution for this particular subdivision that we're discussing tonight, but also into the future. New development and redevelopment both give the Park District opportunities to increase our open space. And I think Sandhome Woods is a perfect example of an opportunity that came about on the east side of Geneva in the old part of town where it's very difficult for us to get parcels of open space that are larger than, you know, a half, quarter, half, or an acre of land. But we were able to do that at Sandhome, and we're able to do those due to land cash contributions. So, I appreciate you listening and thank you for all of your support in that regard in the past, and I hope it continues into the future.
Thank you, Siobhan.
If anyone has any questions? If not, I'm sorry, but I do...
Alderman Kilberg?
I had one question.
Yes.
When, when these fees are reduced or waived, then who pays the offset, then, as far as the revenue that the Park and School District would use to, to deal with, with population growth?
Well, that would come from, in the School District regard, that would come from property taxes and very little revenue. The Park District gets its revenue from about 30 to 35 percent revenue, program and facility use revenue, and the other 65 percent from tax revenue.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Siobhan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Any comments, questions? Anyone from the dais?
I do have, I'm going to leave these two pieces of information.
Certainly.
Regarding the benefits of open space for your review. This one just came out today, so how timely was that?
And during your remarks, of course, not by design, but of course, omitted the City of Geneva's open space referendum in 1997 called Prairie Green.
You know what? That, that was also in the list, though.
Eighty plus percent.
One of them was the city.
Yes, so... Alderman Simoni? Your microphone, sir?
I'm just curious how we, as a city, calculate this. I mean, is there a way that someone can share with me how we come up with these calculations?
David, do you want to go through the math? And this is not Common Core math, this is just good old math, so...
I mean, I don't know how to...
Well, first of all, let me give the background. As Park District Director indicated, Krugoff case in Naperville was a Supreme Court case that led the way for a more universal approach permitting, as a requirement, contribution of land or cash in lieu of land for new development, where the, there's a definite nexus between the development and the, and the either new schoolchildren or recreational areas. And as a result, Naperville had a calculation based upon certain formula, and that's evolved over the years. Although I understand, I think, that the company that used to generate that formula or do the background investigation for how many square feet of a elementary schoolroom is necessary for, to, to take care of one student is no longer in business. So, I'm, I'm sure there's somebody else in the country that is doing it, but... Capital, capital expenditure. This is not for the operation. The land cash has nothing to do with the operation of programs. Doesn't have anything to do with the operation of schools. Doesn't have anything to do with the mowing of grass in a park setting. It is for the land acquisition, that capital acquisition. There are some exceptions to that rule that, in fact, I think the City of Geneva's done over the years through annexation agreements in which there's been the use of cash contributed by a developer for items other than land acquisition. So, any of these cash contributions that come through our subdivision control ordinance, the one in question here, is to be utilized solely for land, not any bricks and mortars. Now, David can tell you about the, but there is a formula that's within our subdivision control ordinance.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to get into each multiplier, but basically, there's, there's a multiplier that's assigned to a residence, whether that's, and there's two different multipliers, one for detached single family and one for attached or multifamily. And that gives you a multiplier for each level of schooling, elementary, middle, and high school. And it basically generates an estimate of how many students would be generated by that development, by that product. And then you do that time, you multiply that by the fair market value. In our ordinance, it's $185,000 per acre, and that gives you the ultimate estimate for that project.
And that's what we recommend to the developer?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, we have, we have an Excel sheet. You just plug in the number of units and the type of unit, and it does the math for you.
Okay. Thank you.
We can't separate the school part of it from the Park District part? You can't separate that?
Well, there's two different multipliers, one for each district.
Okay.
So, two, two different, two different figures are generated, one for the Park District and then one for the School District.
As I understand, the dispute here has to do with whether there's a credit for the one unit that's being torn down.
Correct. There's not really a dispute over how those figures are...
So, that's part of the ordinance, I understand, is not particularly well-worded. Is that correct?
Correct. The ordinance doesn't clearly state that credits can be applied, but it does state that the City Council has the ability to grant relief from basically any of the regulations in the subdivision control ordinance. And that's what the, that the developers requested is relief for that credit.
So, in this case, you plugged the number five into the formula instead of the number six because there are six units being built, but one is being demolished.
Well, in this case, they've done the math for the six units, and then those are attached single families, so that's a different formula that generates that number. And then they've subtracted the, or the detached single-family residents from that number.
Which subtracts more than 1 sixth because the multipliers are higher for...
A little, a little over $6,000, yeah.
Thank you.
Alderman Bruno?
So, how would our spreadsheet behave, then, in an infill situation? We tear down, detached, single-family detached and build another single-family detached?
If it does not involve a subdivision or planned unit development, there's no land cash required.
Thank you.
It's tripped by the, in this case, the planned unit development trips the request.
Thank you. Alderman Cummings. Then Alderman Maladra.
I don't want to get the two issues confused. You had, Siobhan, brought up the importance of land for the Park District, and I believe in that. And I strongly believe in the School District and the importance of land for the School District if they expand. My vote against this isn't a vote against the importance of this. My vote against this is the way that I read the ordinance. The intent is to provide relief when we have increased usage of the different districts. I don't, in, in this case, I don't see increased use. I think it's only fair, I think it's very fair to net it out. I do see a problem with infill moving forward if we go into different buildings. If we go from single to multi and we don't have a way, but it does appear we do, but if we didn't have a way to, to work with that, I think that's a problem. But we used to work with land cash, I don't know, 13 years or something with the library. I, I feel like I have a good understanding of the intent, and the intent, I think, is to provide relief when there's higher demand on the, on the facility. And, and I don't see that here, and so I can't, but it's not a vote against the importance of it. I don't see increased usage beyond what we're granting, and, and that's why I'm against your position. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Maladra?
Same thing.
Ditto?
Ditto.
Let the record show that's a ditto.
I want another ditto, too.
From the dais, anyone else? From the audience? Mr. Patzel?
Good evening. David Patzel, 77 North First Street. For the record, I, I'll ditto your, your comments as well, and I think it's a little ironic to some of the things that were discussed tonight. Back in 1994, the Show Dean organization proposed and had approved by the county a over, approximately 2,000-acre development. At the time, there was no ordinance for open space contribution, and we felt open space was important for development and worked on a, an agreement with the Geneva Park District that not only worked on donating land, but also donated and worked together on donations for improvements to that, to that land. But again, that was, in our eyes, was relating to the impact, the impact or the, the offset that, that we were, that we were creating. And so, and since that time, we have continued to have a good relationship with the Park District and as recently in the last year or two made what we believe was a significant donation to the, to the Park District of a swimming pool under no auspices that we were required to make, make that, that donation. So, we, we are looking at this again as the impact or the difference or offset that, that we are creating to the, to both the Park District and, and the School District. Thank you.
Siobhan? Yes, you do. We've got, at last count, 14 million people that tune in every Monday night, so we got to make sure.
I'm going to find out if that's done, bounce.
Not at that podium.
Ditto to everything Dave just said. The Park District in the Mill Creek development and over the years has had a very good relationship with Show Dean, Show Dean Development, so we appreciate that. Thank you. Ditto. I just do want to say that my reason for, for coming was to talk about the other side of this piece of legislation, or not legislation, but the piece of this ordinance, which is the, the land contribution. The impact fees, I am in agreement with you. I'm in agreement with you, Dave, that the impact fees are impact fees for additional residents that move in, but I think that falls more under the auspice of the School District than it does the Park District. I think when the ordinance pertains to the Park District, it relates more to open space and conserving open space and having the opportunity to purchase that when it becomes available. So, that would be my comment, based on. Don, yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion by Alderman Bruno. I believe the second is Alderman Flanagan. Oh, excuse me, Alderman Cummings, forgive me.
No, Alderman Bruno.
Alderman Brown. I thought it was Brian. Good Lord.
Sorry, what's the motion again?
The motion is item 11A.
To approve.
It is to approve. This was voted unanimously at the Committee of the Whole meeting? Yes, Alderman Simoni?
Question, Mayor. Are we, are we doing these individually again? Are we doing these all?
No, one lump sum.
Okay.
Anyone else? Item 11A, roll call, please. Mr. Clerk.
Dean Kilberg?
Aye.
Greg Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Motion passes with 10 affirmative votes and no nay votes. We jump down to item number 12. Item 13, new business. Any new business this night from anyone in the audience joining us? From the dais? Motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Marx, Alderman Simoni, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.